And open session. We've returned from closed session where no action was taken. This regular business meeting of the Waco ISD Board is hereby called to order. All items discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law. I extend a warm welcome to those that are here with us tonight and those who watch our meetings on television. The Board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent approved budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. The Board's not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. At this time, I ask you turn your cell phones to silent if you haven't already done so, and we appreciate the time you've taken to join us, to honor the kids that I see here tonight, and for your interest in Waco ISD. At this moment, I'd like to ask you to pause with me as we take time for prayer, contemplation, reflection, or meditation, especially keep our faculty and staff at University High School in your thoughts tonight, as well as our students who continue to mourn the loss of Coach Mike Chapman. Audience for guests. I have not received an invite. Special recognitions. Mr. Wucho? Yes. I followed the agenda tonight.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, we're pleased to have two students from Crestview Elementary School to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, Luna Montalongo and Julius Cross. Ms. Samantha Crater is the principal of Crestview Elementary School and has accompanied the students this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, students. Dr. Kinkanen and Board members, please join us in front of the dais for tonight's special We'll begin the special recognition portion of our meeting with an introduction of our pledge leaders who both attend Crestview Elementary School. Luna Montalongo, a fifth grader, says math is her favorite subject, and she also enjoys nature and the outdoors. One of her teachers said she is a very motivated young lady and is dedicated to her family. She's hardworking, sweet, and family-oriented. When she grows up, she hopes to become a doctor. Luna's father, Jose Montalongo, has accompanied her here tonight. Would you please stand so we may recognize you? Thank you for sharing your daughter with us this evening. Julius Cross is also a fifth grader at Crestview, and his favorite class is also science. Julius enjoys building things and riding his bike and would like to become a builder when he grows up. One of his teachers said he is a hardworking young man and is extremely kind to his peers. His mother, Akeia Steverson, has joined him this evening. Would you please stand so we may recognize you as well? Thank you for raising such a wonderful son. Last month, we recognized one young artist for her performance in the annual Waco Women's Lions Club International Peace Poster Contest, and this evening, we're pleased to recognize two additional students. Each year, the Waco Women's Lions Club hosts the local portion of the organization's International Peace Poster Contest, where youths aged 11 to 13 are given the opportunity to share their artistic vision for peace. Approximately 600,000 students from 75 countries participate in this contest annually. Since its inception in 1988, millions of children around the world have participated. This year's theme, Journey of Peace, drew 34 qualified entries at the local level, and Waco ISD students took the top three prizes. Tonight, we are excited to recognize two of those three students. From Lake Air Montessori Magnet School, unfortunately, she couldn't join us here today, but this is sixth grader Sylvia Perez's entry, which earned second place, which you can see on the screens. And Brittany Leha, also a sixth grader, earned a third place, who joins us here this evening. You can see her artwork as well on the screens. This evening, we'd also like to recognize Ms. Nikki Stokes, the art teacher at Lake Air Montessori, for her dedication to her students and for encouraging and guiding her students' artistic expression. If you are a parent of one of our students this evening, please stand so we may recognize you as well. Congratulations to these students on their outstanding artistic achievements, and thank you for representing Waco ISD so well. DELL Scholars is a scholarship and college completion program that nurtures and empowers students on their path to a college degree. Since starting the program in 2004, the Michael and Susan Dell Foundation has supported more than 4,800 scholars, including more than 2,400 college graduates. The program recognizes and assists an underserved population, students who are often among the first in their families to attend college, with many having overcome personal challenges in their pursuit of higher education. While the financial award of $20,000 helps students with various education expenses, most importantly, the DELL Scholars Program is a college completion program that provides students with key support to obtain a college degree, including a laptop, textbook credits, and additional guidance to students and their families to ensure college success. In December 2019, nine Waco ISD seniors were announced as semifinalists for this prestigious honor. Please join me in congratulating from Waco High, Zamara Long. And now from University High School, I must add that this list has an extra bit of excitement as these eight semifinalists represent a university high record for the number of DELL Scholars semifinalists. First up, we have Maria Batista. A few of our students are not here this evening, Maria, Tiana Bouye, and Jacob Bryant. Laura Diaz. Delvin Mason. Diana Ortega. And Carolina Perez. If you are a parent or family member of one of these outstanding scholars, would you please stand and be recognized at this time? Additionally, if you're a teacher, counselor, principal, advisor, any other educational figure to one of these students, would you please stand as well to be recognized? We would like to wish all of these students all the best in the coming months and look forward to hopefully celebrating with them as finalists when they are announced later this spring. You have each made Waco ISD very proud. Waco ISD's theme for the 2019-2020 school year is Rise. The theme celebrates learning and growing as well as overcoming challenges and recognizes that no school district rises by itself. Instead, Waco ISD rises when families, employees, and the community join together to realize their shared hopes and dreams for the district's students and their future. Waco ISD is blessed to have scores of community partners who are deeply invested in the district's students and their success. Each month, the district will recognize a community partner making a difference with the Rise Award for Outstanding Community Partners. In January, the district is recognizing the Baylor University School of Education. Through professional development school partnerships, the Baylor University School of Education and Waco ISD have been collaborating for 26 years to train the next generation of classroom teachers. This partnership currently serves six campuses: Hillcrest PDS, Bills Hill Elementary, Mountainview Elementary, Parkdale Elementary, Caesar Chavez Middle, and University High School. The Waco ISD and Baylor University School of Education Partnership, which provides a clinical approach to teacher preparation, received the exemplary Professional Development School Achievement Award from the National Association of Professional Development Schools in 2018. Here this evening, to represent the Baylor School of Education and accept the Rise Award for Outstanding Community Partner, please welcome Dr. Crystal Gory, Director of Office And we want to say thank you to the entire School of Education, including the 28 interns and 53 associates currently working in our classrooms this semester for your commitment and dedication to the students in Waco ISD. Thank you again. All right, we'll continue the fun. Each year, the Texas Association of School Boards encourages districts to celebrate School Board Recognition Month during the month of January. Our school board members are volunteers who share a passion for not just public education, but more specifically for Waco ISD. These seven individuals have the common goal of consistently focusing on the current and future success of our students, staff, and our district as a whole. They represent our community and serve as a link between the community and the classroom. The theme for this year's School Board Recognition Month is incredibly fitting for the work these volunteers do: Launching the Next Generation. For it is through our classrooms, athletics, fine arts, and countless other programs that our students become prepared to launch out into the world to become future educators, physicians, parents, and leaders in our community. This evening, we'd like to take a moment to recognize each of our trustees individually. When thinking about the theme of launching the next generation, we recognize that literacy and access to quality books are key ways to ensure our students find success and continue to grow in their education. This year, in honor of each trustee, we have selected a children's book that will be given to each of our 15 elementary schools to commemorate this School Board Recognition Month and honor each of you for your service to our district. In preparing for this evening, we asked individuals from across the district to share with us how each of you have worked for and made an impact for students, their campuses, their departments, and the district as a whole, and we're pleased to share just a sampling of their words of appreciation, which I'll read on their behalf in a moment. So trustees, as we recognize you, would you please join Dr. Kinkanen at the end of the dais when we go to each member? We'll also be joined by some very special guests this evening, who will be assisting us during the presentation. First up, we'd like to start with one of our newest trustees, Jose Vedanya. Mr. Vedanya visits and supports our campus and is often at parent involvement nights and football games, engaging with the families in our community. Yes, join Dr. Kinkanen. I appreciate his support of not only our campus specifically, but the entire South Waco community. Presenting, Mr. Vedanya with an award commemorating his service and the book given in his honor, please welcome from Alta Vista Elementary, fourth grader Cassidy Orchard. The children's book, Starstuff by Stephanie Roth Sisson, will be given to each of our elementary libraries in Mr. Vedanya's honor. Starstuff follows renowned astronomer Carl Sagan from his early days after stargazing from the bedroom window of his Brooklyn apartment to his work as an internationally renowned scientist who worked on the Voyager missions exploring the farthest reaches of space. Mr. Vedanya, thank you for dedicating your time and efforts to ensure a new generation of dreamers and stargazers is given the opportunity to explore their passions. Robin Houston. As a Waco ISD parent, Waco High alumna, and daughter of a Waco ISD teacher, Ms. Houston has a unique and much appreciated perspective. She has been a strong supporter of the fine arts, history fair, and advanced academics, and knows in a very personal way just how much work and dedication it takes to be an effective teacher. Please welcome from Dean Highland Elementary, fifth grader Jacory Johnson, and from Hillcrest PDS, kindergartner Allison Granata. The children's book, May Among the Stars by Rhoda Ahmed, will be given to each of our elementary libraries in Ms. Houston's honor. That book tells the story of May Jemison, the first African-American woman to travel in space. Her curiosity, intelligence, and determination paved the way for incredible success at NASA. Ms. Houston, thank you for your dedication to ensuring our students know their big dreams, even those among the stars can be realized. I'm kind of upstaged by a kindergartner there. That's okay. She deserves it. Stephanie Courtois. Ms. Courtois is an inviting individual with a sense of joy and a smile when visiting campuses. She has a heart for our district and has always been such an encouragement, wanting to know how the community and Board can support our schools. Please welcome from J.H. Hines Elementary, fourth grader Riley Royal, and from Cedar Ridge Elementary, second grader Noah Millsap. The children's book, Solway by actress Lupita Nyong'o, will be given to each of our elementary libraries in Ms. Courtois's honor. Through a magical journey through the night sky, young Solway's eyes are opened, and she learns about self-esteem and her unique and individual beauty. Ms. Courtois, thank you for inspiring our students and teachers to embark on their own magical journeys in the sky to discover their own unique gifts. Carrie Dupuis. Mr. Dupuis has always asked for real input. He wants to know what is needed and how the Board can support our schools. He is a dedicated parent who actively attends campus events and is truly invested in our schools. Additionally, he is, I believe this is quite a compliment, extremely hilarious. Makes me laugh, always lends a smile, a handshake, or hug, and offers words of advice. Please welcome from Bellesale Elementary, fourth grader Daisy Lara, and from Provident Heights Elementary, fifth grader Henry Gutierrez. The children's book, Oh No, Astro, by Matt Roser, will be given to each of our elementary libraries in Mr. Dupuis's honor. In this book, Astro, a grumpy asteroid, takes an unexpected journey through space when he's thrown out of orbit. Even though he might be cranky at times, he embarks on an epic adventure. Mr. Dupuis, based on the input noted above, there's no way that we would compare you to that cranky asteroid. However, we can thank you for always supporting teachers and students so that they have the resources they need to embark on their own journeys and epic adventures. Yes, yes. Secretary Norman Manning. Shows true dedication to the students in our district, and his personal visits to campuses demonstrate his commitment to learning more about the needs of our schools. He always greets you with open arms and makes you feel like you are highly supported by the Board of Trustees, and simply asks, "How are things going at your campus?" Please welcome from Brook Avenue Elementary, fourth grader Jonathan Ibarra Martinez, and from South Waco, Emma Pierce. The children's book, Margaret and the Moon by Dean Robbins, will be given to each of our elementary libraries and Secretary Manning's honor. This story tells of Margaret Hamilton, a pioneer in her field who worked for NASA and is noted for saving the first lunar landing. She handwrote code that allowed Apollo 8, 9, 10, and 11 to solve problems and complete their mission. Trustee Manning, because of your work on the Board, our staff and students also have the tools they need to solve problems and complete their missions. Thank you for your dedication to help them reach for the stars. Vice President Alan Sykes. Mr. Sykes has consistently been a friendly and supportive trustee. Among other things, he has been a champion for athletics by recognizing that one of the ways we develop well-rounded students and leaders is through extracurricular programs like athletics. He has ensured that in planning for the future for our facilities, that the athletics programs are included and not shortchanged. Please welcome from Lake Air Montessori Magnet School, second grader Bryce Davis, and from Parkdale Elementary, pre-K student Caitlin Betcher. The children's book, which is almost the size of Caitlin, The Darkest Dark by astronaut Colonel Chris Hadfield, will be given to each of our elementary libraries in Mr. Sykes' honor. Inspired by Colonel Hadfield's childhood and his viewing of the groundbreaking -- now I'm upstaged by a pre-kindergartner. The book explores how a young boy overcomes his greatest fear, the dark, to pursue his dreams of traveling in space. Mr. Sykes, thank you for encouraging and supporting our students to be brave, conquer their fears, and dream the impossible. President Angela Teckel. Ms. Teckel has been a strong and valuable supporter of many programs, including the Waco High Mock Trial Team. She is a tenacious advocate for what she believes is the best interest of the district and has led the Board and District through momentous transitions. She is receptive and open to feedback, and the way she listens to district employees is extremely meaningful. Please welcome back from Crestview Elementary, fifth graders Luna Montalongo and Julius The children's book, The Girl Who Named Pluto by Alice B. McGinty, will be given to each of our elementary libraries in Ms. Teckel's honor. As a young girl in 1930, Venetia Burney loved Roman mythology and thought Pluto would be the perfect name for the newly discovered planet. With the help of her grandfather, Venetia's idea was cemented in history as the name for the new planet. Ms. Teckel, thank you for leading the Board and recognizing that even the smallest of ideas, when nurtured and encouraged, can grow to unimaginable heights and become a part of Waco ISD history. And finally, while she's not expecting this, but we hope she'll indulge us, we know that no team can be complete without our superintendent. And since it was Dr. Kinkanen's idea to give books to our libraries in honor of our school board this evening, we wanted to add just one more book for each library in her honor as well. Please welcome from Mountainview Elementary, first grader James Haney, Kendrick Elementary kindergartner, Jimena Romero. The children's book, The Most Magnificent Thing by Ashley Spires, will be given to each of our elementary libraries in Dr. Kinkanen's honor. Dr. Kinkanen has used this book in her conversations with campus principals, and we thought it fitting to spread its message to our youngest children as well. A young girl learns that when you have an idea, it sometimes takes some tinkering and reworking and twists and tweaks along the way, but through imagination and dedication, you might just end up with the most magnificent thing. A total of eight new titles will be given to each of our 15 elementary libraries in honor of this group of hardworking individuals as a token of our appreciation for your role in Waco ISD. On behalf of the entire district, its staff, its students, thank you to each of you individually and to you as a group for your tireless and often unrecognized work and efforts for the students of our community. And that will wrap it up for this month's recognitions. Thank you again. Oh, we're going to do a group picture.
Okay, well, it's hard to follow all those kids.
I know, I was just going to say, hard to follow. Wow. Do I have some kindergartners in pre-K?
Yeah, so next is public hearing regarding the 2018-19 Texas Academic Performance Report, or TAPER, presenter, Ms. Tammy Weathorne.
All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board and Dr. Kinkanen. Please bear with my voice, it's kind of been going in and out all week, but I'll do the best I can. Tonight, I'm here to review the 2018-19 Texas Academic Performance Report. Texas Education Code 39.306 requires each district's Board of Trustees to publish an annual report that includes the PDF TAPER as well as information included in our annual report of the 2018-19 school year's data. Tonight, we are just here to review the aspects of the documents required in the report, as this is all information and reports you've been viewing and talking about and seeing all year long. The district and campus data reports are combined and will be included in the final web-posted document within two weeks of this hearing date. I've met with Mr. Wucho, and we are revising our district webpage, so it will all be -- it is all combined, but he will be getting that out there just as soon as possible. You have a blue folder, it's a navy blue folder, that I provided you because I wanted you to have a little bit of a point of reference to some of the parts that I'll be speaking to. Those are paginated, so if I give you a page number, you can flip to that so that it will give you an idea of what the different parts of the report will contain. Section one of the Texas Academic Performance Report begins with a look at our district and campus data. So if you see page one, you can see that's section one. What I did is gave you the actual copy of our district TAPER report, and these TAPER reports are published by TEA, and again, it contains all of the information that we've been talking about this year. It's got a couple of new components that are new for the 2018-19 school year, and it's now published, it will be published, in two different formats. Format one is a very comprehensive online system that the state of Texas has implemented. It is not up in its entirety just yet, but I've been told that it should be available by the 31st of January, so we look forward to seeing that. It also will include, just as you see in our TAPER report, two years of STAR data for each district and campus that's reported in this report. Format two is a PDF version that we will be posting on our website. This only includes major statutorily required data points, and it's designed to allow districts to fulfill their public notification requirements. So if you notice on the very first page, it's page two of your packet, you see the cover sheet, and the cover sheet contains some pretty important information. It gives you the 2019 district and campus rating. It shows you, on the campus reports, when you get to those, it will show you the METS Standard or Improvement Required Status for the campuses when those are added. As you can see, if I would have printed all of those off, we would have had a stack, we'd be here all night. So that's why I just chose some samplings of things to show you. It also gives you our special education determination status, as you can see there, for 2019, still needs substantial intervention, and I know we've talked about that before, so I don't want to go into that, but those are the kinds of information that's provided on this page. As you move through and look through the next few pages there, through Page 26, you will see, as I'll go through, some different items that are denoted there. The 2018 Armed Forces vocab ASVAB test is included in that information, as well as the 2019 distinction designations. Also included in Section 1 would be our STAR Performance Report, which we look at very closely. It includes our Approaches grade level, it includes Meets, and it also includes the Masters grade level or above scores. It's reported for each assessment that we give, all grades, all subjects, all grades by subjects. So it's examined every which way you can look at it. If you continue on and kind of skim through it, you will see that performance data includes the results from our Accountability Year. This is important to understand, because things, the Accountability Year is kind of morphed and changed over the last two to three years. So the actual very first date of our Accountability Information started in the summer of 2018 for 2018-19. Then we moved to December 2018, and then, of course, our spring culmination of all the other tests that happened last spring. So for all intent purposes right now, our new Accountability Year started just this past summer with our Summer EOC scores and just completed with our second round of December retest. The only results that are included in this are for our Accountability subsets in making these determinations. And those Accountability subsets are determined by the students that we call or in attendance on Snapshot Day. Snapshot Day is the last Friday of October. It's when we're all wanting everybody in school and well and ready to go. As you move forward in it, you will also see for the district, as well as campus, school progress, which is our academic growth. Remember, we've talked about the growth points that we can achieve throughout the school year, and it can be included for students who did not necessarily pass the STAR test in the Approaches range, but gave us growth points for showing a significant amount of growth. Student success initiative performances for 5th and 8th grade are also denoted in here. And then you see a list of all of our bilingual education, English as a Second Language Performance measures that are looked at as well. I won't go into all of those in detail, but those are all of the things now that have been added that we are looking at when measuring our EL student performance. And towards the end, it continues on in Section 1, and we talk about our STAR participation. We have very strong STAR participation. We also look at our attendance, graduation, and dropout rates, and you will see that it will give you our four-year graduation, our five- and six-year extended longitudinal graduation rates as well. It also includes, towards the end, a graduation profile showing students at which plan students are graduating on and so forth. And last but not least, it talks about college and career readiness. We look at all of our CCMR data that we've talked about, TSI results, you've heard about, CTE coherent courses, college prep courses, APIB, SAT, ACT, dual credit, any and all courses, and anything that has anything to do with graduation and college and career readiness is denoted here with the results from our test results this past school year. Other secondary indicators would be there as well, such as student information. It shows the demographic breakdown of all of our students towards the end, staff notification and informations, classification by teachers, by ethnicity, gender, highest degree earned, experience, campus leadership, staff salaries, teacher turnover rate information, et cetera. And we also look at program information, such as student enrollment by program and teachers by program. So those are all the things that are included in just Section 1, which would be the actual, what we call the taper report, and this is also known as a taper hearing. It gets kind of confusing, because the state asks us to include additional information above and beyond that we gather from different sources on the TEA website. So that's what will be actually printed in PDF format online as we move into the next couple of weeks, as soon as we get that website going. Section 2 refers to, and it's on Page 27, Section 2 refers to the PMS Financial Standard Report, which I know was delivered a couple of weeks ago, I believe, or a couple of months ago. It has to do with our actual financial data for our district and for each campus. I just put a sample in of what the district one looks like. Following that one will also be all of the campus financial reports as well. So everybody is accounted for by campus and district in our report. And you will see the receipts, fund balances, disbursement, everything in any way that money is spent in our district. Moving on to Section 3, Page 32. Each year, TEA has to assign an accreditation of four statuses to each district in the state. The four choices are accredited, accredited warrant, accredited probation, non-accredited revoked. I'm happy to report we are accredited. In assigning this accreditation, they consider accountability ratings, financial ratings, data integrity, and program area deficiencies as well. So on Page 33, you can see our formal accreditation status was A, Superior for Accountability First Rating, which is our financial part. The rating was a C, remember, it's a year ago, so it was a C, and then it's Accredited was our status right now. And next, for Section 4, we move into something that I know we spent a lot of time on a couple of weeks ago, because I distinctly remember being here, and that's our Campus Improvement Plans. And that's what comprises Section 4. So I gave you an example on Page 35, starting with our District Improvement Plan, and then following that, and I know we are in some update modes with Campus Improvement Plans right now as well, but those will all follow in suit in the PDF format. We'll have our district, and then we'll have each of the campus, Campus Improvement Plans that will be provided in this report as well. Section 5, moving on, is our Report of Violent and Criminal Incidents. Texas Education Code 39.306 requires each district to publish its part of its annual report, a report on violent and criminal incidents at each campus in the district. So on Page 39, you will see, I provided you a list of the violent code, violent crime definitions that we have to report on. There's a lot of other crimes that are listed that we use, but these are the ones that must be reported. There are 17 of those codes that you will see there. And if you look on the next page, you'll find a chart that shows the report on our violent and criminal incidents. For elementaries, we have zero, which is pretty amazing. And our numbers are actually fairly low across the board. If you look at the total district, we have 10 incidents that occurred during the 18-19 school year. I kind of divided those out. We had two at Tennyson, six at Waco High, one at Challenge, and one at University. Of those, Code 12 is bringing an unlawful knife to school. We had five of those incidents. We had Code 30, which is emergency expulsion, we had three of those. Assault for an employee or a volunteer, that's a Code 32, we only had one of those, and we had one truancy violation. So those are the numbers and what's included in our violent and criminal history incident Moving into Section 6, Student Performance in Post-Secondary Institutions. This is a report that is published by the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, and when you look at this report, it's on Page 42. What you will see are the three high schools that are listed, and it shows you the type of university or college that those students were attending. And this would be graduates from the year 2017 who enrolled in 2018 in one of those colleges or universities. And it shows you the total grads in each of those categories, and the numbers and their GPA in those categories as well. Brazos High School at this time did not have any that reported any of the GPAs, that's why you don't see those there. There are, these are hard to track, obviously, and they do the best job that they can, but the information that was trackable is what you will see that's provided by that board, coordinating board. And last but not least, we have the glossary. I gave you just a couple of pages of that. Any and everything in this report that's a descriptor of anything will be in this glossary, and it gives you a very concise definition of how that's configured and what is involved in providing that information. So with that, I bring you the 2018-19 Annual Report. If you have any questions, this will be posted, again, within two weeks, I'm hoping by the end of early, or the beginning of next week with Mr. Wheaton. And it's also going to be made available in the district's main office, and each campus in the district will provide a copy of that to any parent that should like to have a paper copy of it. It will be online at all campuses and within our district site as well.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so if anybody has any questions? No?
Thank you.
Okay, so about 7:40, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you. Next, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Kincanon.
Okay, I have three items for you this evening. The first is an introduction of Tiffany Whitzel. Tiffany, would you stand? There she is. Tiffany is, has joined Waco ISD as our new Executive Director for Secondary Education. She comes to us with more than 20 years of experience in public education. She served as a teacher and a coach in Pleasant Grove and Redwater ISDs, a teacher, an athletic coordinator, an assistant principal, and a principal in Flugerville ISD, and most recently as the principal of Rockdale High School since 2014. She received a bachelor's degree in education from Southern Arkansas University, a master's in education from Texas State University, and she will be graduating in May with a doctorate in, she's crossing her fingers there, in educational administration from Texas A&amp;M University. Welcome to Waco ISD.[1416.13][1416.13](applause) And she's busy, we've already put her to work. The next item I have is the End-of-Course Retest Summary for December 2019, and I've provided you with the data, the results from that testing that was recently done, and I want to give you some information about that. As you know, students are required to pass the STAR End-of-Course exams in English 1, English 2, Algebra 1, and US History in order to graduate from high school. And they're given three chances to pass those exams. They first take the English 1 exam as a 9th grader, English 2 as a 10th grader, Algebra 1 as an 8th or 9th grader, Biology as a 9th or 10th grader, and US History as an 11th or 12th grader. And they're considered to have passed if they obtain a score at least at the Approaches level. You have the data there in front of you, and it is color-coded with the green showing increases over last year. And I would like to point out that these are not the same students. So these are different students than you would have seen data for last year, these are this year's results for students who retested from any of those subjects in multiple grade levels. So overall, we've increased the number and percentage of students at the Approaches level for the December test administration compared to 2018 in English 1, English 2, Algebra 1, and US History. You can see Biology is the only area where we didn't see increases over last year, and you can see that overall Biology has a smaller number of students who were retesting. So that denominator was smaller to begin with. In English 1, 577 students were retested, with 26% achieving at the Approaches level or above. Last year, at the same time, there were 626 students, so notice that that number has come down. And they were at 14% achieving last year. This year, 26% of the retesters were able to meet the standard. In English 2, 422 students were tested in December with 19% achieving at the Approaches level or above. Last year, at the same time, there were 475 students, again, fewer students having to retest this year, and 16% achieving at the Approaches level last year. In Algebra 1, we had 140 students retesting, with 43% achieving at the Approaches level or above. Last year, there were 217 students retesting, and 32% met the standard. For Biology, we retested 144 students in December, with 32% of those students achieving at the Approaches level or above. Last year, at the same time, we retested 166 at 43%, with 43% of those achieving at the Approaches level or above. In US History, 81 students were tested, with 47% meeting the, hitting the standard. Last year, we had 84 students at about 38% meeting standard at the same time. So these are important tests, students have to pass them in order to graduate, and at this time, we have 117 seniors who still need to pass one or more exams. And so our staff is working diligently to prepare students for the next administration, which will be in April, and we're providing targeted instructional support to help students meet those standards. So I wanted to share that with you this evening, so you had that information. You do have that by the district and by each of our high schools. Any questions on that? Okay, and then lastly, I've given you a copy of the board calendar for 2020 with all of the meeting dates listed there for you, and if you have any questions about the calendar, I'd be happy to answer those as well.
Sure.
Thank you so much for this, the testing in regards to the end-of-year test results. I think that helps give us a good gauge as to how our campuses are doing. It seems like they're kind of, they're coming up, and so that's just helpful to kind of keep tabs on in the beginning of the year to know.
Thank you. I was pleased to see that both Waco High School and University High School were very close in terms of achievement, and numbers of seniors still needing to pass, and so that was encouraging to me, and I was encouraged to see that the number had dropped from last year. Even though they were, they're different students, that's still encouraging, absolutely. Thank you for that.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much. Next, we have the Consent Agenda. No one asked me to pull anything. Is there any item on the Consent Agenda that we need to pull? Okay. If that's the case, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Consent Agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Manning, thank you, Mr. Sykes, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Next, number 10 is Review Discuss- Next, number ten is, "Review, Discuss, Take Appropriate Action Regarding the Hiring of the District's Athletic Director." Dr. Kim Cannon.
Thank you. I know this announcement came, was that right at Christmas time? Right at the hol- time of the holidays? I'm trying to remember if it was before we left or just as we were getting back. But it, so it may feel a little bit like old news, but this is an action item for the board, and we are very excited, and I'm honored to recommend Ed Love is our Athletic Director for Waco ISD. Mr. Love has thirty-eight years of experience, including twenty of those years as a middle and high school teacher and coach. At Waco High School, Coach Love served as the Defensive Coordinator for the football team as well as the Head Baseball Coach. As an administrator, he has served as the Executive Director of School Leadership for Transformation Waco. Has been principal at Waco High School, was the principal at GW Carver Middle School, principal at Wiley Opportunity, and an Assistant Associate Principal at Waco High School. And it is my honor to recommend Mr. Love this evening as the Athletic Director for Waco ISD. You could have bothered to say something.
Well, I was gonna see if there was any discussion. Mr. Manning, you look like you're about to say something.
I'm very proud and happy that Coach Love, I've been working with him since I got on the board nine years, ten years ago, and he has proven to be a great, he has taught me a lot. Tell you a little secret, when I, when I have questions about how things work in this district, I usually go to him, and that's his opinion and everything. So now y'all know my secret and everything. But I really do appreciate him. He has been a great mentor. There was a lot of things that, when I first got on the board, I didn't understand, and this gentleman truly helped me. And I think that was one of the best decisions we made, to make him the Athletic Director. Do, any emotion?
You did get a little ahead of himself. I guess, I guess we need a motion before we need discussion, right? Yeah, I'll let you make that motion, Mr. Manning. A second?
I move that we accept the Coach Edward Love, Mr. Love, as the Athletic Director for Waco Independent School District.
At this time, I just want to say, I think I met Coach Love twenty-five years ago as our children were soccer stars at the time, I think. It's my memory. And unfortunately, I missed him as the principal of Waco High School. My children had already graduated. And I'm also very excited for you and for the district. Thanks for sticking around and hanging in there. So we're excited about the things to come. So, that's, anybody else? Yes, Ms. Hughes?
I, I also want to say I'm very excited about Mr. Love being the Athletic Director. I, I did get the opportunity to have him as my child's principal at Waco High, and he was an amazing principal. And also, I got to tour a lot of the Transformation Waco schools with him, and he was very gracious and helpful and explained everything I needed to know. And it was a real, just a good experience. And we're, I'm very excited that he's gonna agree to be the Athletic Director for the district.
Ready to vote? Okay.
Now, many of us benefited with our families and children when Coach Love coached them through various athletic endeavors through high school years. And great memories, you know, great teams at that time. And, and those kids are, are still in touch with each other. So it was very, very good coaching that was done at that time, and it's continued on through your career. And we, I'd like to say we welcome you back. You were temporarily on loan, if you will, and, and now we have you back, so to speak. So we want to congratulate you and, and look forward to seeing you at the athletic endeavors that we do. So, very good.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Welcome. Would you like to say a few words? Not at this time?
Any predictions?
Okay.
Well, I would just like to say he is already working hard, and we're very appreciative. So, thank you.
All right. Item eleven, "Review, Discuss, Take Appropriate Action Regarding the 2021 Instructional Calendar." Deana Cornblum.
Hello. All right. Three versions of the district calendar was reviewed on November nineteenth, 2019 with our Quality District Advisory Committee. And then on December the eleventh, 2019, those versions went out to community and staff members via our website, email newsletters. Along with that was a survey attached and asks all stakeholders to vote for their preferred version. And Calendar I, which you have in your packet, was the calendar that received the most votes. So all calendars were in accordance with EB Local, which states that because Waco ISD is a district of innovation, we are exempt from the rule to start school. Well, that rule says that we can start school no earlier than the Fourth Monday in August and prohibits scheduling the last day prior to May fifteenth. And so we are prohibited from having to abide by that. But we do have to follow EC Local, which states that we must have seventy-five thousand, six hundred minutes of instructional time each day, and that's in accordance with state law as well. What did I say?
Each year.
Oh, yeah, each day. That would be some short instruction, wouldn't it? Sorry, yeah, each day. Or each year.
It's been a long day.
Moving right along. Calendar I actually reflects seventy-eight thousand, three hundred minutes. So we are above on our minutes there, and that equals about six days. So some specifics about this calendar, there are one hundred and eighty-seven contracted, teacher contracted days on the calendar as required by the state. And then you'll see on the calendar that to support professional development, development needs of some of the things that we've discussed during our board workshop last week, and then also at other board meetings, we have some extra professional development days. It equals about one professional development day, a grading period, and four out of our six grading periods. Of course, during our Thanksgiving break time, our winter break and spring break, we wouldn't be able to reflect those. The calendar also is aligned with our local colleges and universities so that we are taking the same spring break week as them. We have one week, one week at Thanksgiving, two weeks for winter break. And then we also are observing the holidays for Labor Day, Columbus Day, Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, and Good Friday. February fifteenth, which is President's Day, could be used as a makeup day should we have to do that for any reason.
The beauty, I, I would chime in a little bit there. The beauty in the minutes of instruction and going above the requirement is that you do have some time where you could delay school and not have to make up time, as long as you have the minutes still in your calendar. So that's a really nice thing to have, and that was really important to us, that we had some additional time in there so that we could, that makes those decisions about morning starts a little bit easier should we have bad weather.
That, and then I'm really trying to carve out that time for professional development to, to work on the, some of the initiatives that we've discussed with the board. So when we got the votes in, and as I stated, Calendar I was the, the calendar of choice. We took the calendar back to Quality District Advisory Committee on January thirteenth for their final approval and for any final recommendations, and they approved it as is. And so tonight, we're asking the board and recommending that we approve this calendar for the WISD 2020-21 Instructional Calendar.
Anybody have any questions? I'll entertain a motion. So moved. Thank you, Ms. Cordewig. Second? Is that you? Oh, Mr. Dupuy, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Carries unanimously. Item eleven, "Consider the, an agreement with O'Connell Robertson Architectural Engineering Firm." Dr. Kim Cannon.
Thank you. Tonight, I'm asking for your approval to execute a contract with O'Connell Robertson Architects to allow us to move forward with several facilities, improvement projects. Some of the projects we would like for O'Connell Robertson to begin with were previously identified and included in this year's budget. And then others have been identified and added this fall. As we continue the assessment process for our facilities, we know we will have some additional projects and do intend to bring you a comprehensive plan forward for your review. However, we want to get busy and get the work moving as we continue the evaluation process. I've worked with O'Connell Robertson Architects for several years. They have my confidence and respect. They've completed several projects while I was Superintendent in Belton, including fine arts and athletic renovations, new school design for an elementary school and the new Lake Belton High School. And it provided general guidance on just a number of facility issues over the years. They've also worked in Leander ISD, Round Rock ISD, and Gerald as whether, as well as other school districts. And so we're asking for your approval this evening to enter into a contract with them for the projects that are listed and some additional ones. And then you can expect in the next couple of months to be provided with an overview of facilities assessment, which is being conducted by Alpha Solutions, which was commissioned over the summer prior to my arrival, which will provide a roadmap for facility maintenance projects. And as well as from O'Connell Robertson, who will use the Alpha Solutions assessment as well as their own evaluation to help us with the facility strategy moving forward. So I've had the opportunity to meet with Jared Sturzinger from O'Connell Robertson, and they're working on, working towards the implementation of capital improvements project plan for Waco ISD.
Does anybody have any questions? Yes, sir, Mr. Manning.
Will we have to approve all these projects when they, when they, on lines? What, what we gonna get done?
Sure. So you've, you've approved some of the projects in your budget planning already for this year, as I mentioned. And then other projects, we will follow the purchasing guidelines regarding the amount of the cost. So if they're larger projects, you're going to see those because you'll be approving the expenditure for those. So you'll see those come by, and of course, I will keep you informed and as well as have presentations by O'Connell Robertson Architects. So you'll, you'll know what we're working on, and you'll approve the expenditures. You bet.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President, I move that we accept the recommendations of the administration as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cordewig. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries unanimously. All right. Annual audit. Presenter Debbie Kiram Young from Weaver and Tidwell, you're up.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board, and Dr. Kim Cannon. Glad to be here tonight to present to you the annual financial report for the fiscal year ended August thirty-first, nineteen. I'm with the firm of Weaver and Tidwell, and we performed our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards as well as the government auditing standards that are issued by the Comptroller General of the United States. In the audit report, if you look at page thirty-one, as you're moving over to that, I know we have a couple of newborn members that were born here last year. And when you see the MDNA, Management's Discussion and Analysis, the tables in there are basically coming from A1 and A2 exhibits that begin on page thirty-one. And I always like to note that when you look at those, those numbers on page thirty-one, they may not look like the, the financial statements or numbers that you've been given by finance. And that's because school districts are quite required by the state of Texas to keep their books on a modified accrual basis. And once a year, they do a consolidation, which takes the general fund, debt service, capital projects, special revenue funds, and they consolidate all those funds and book the capital assets and long-term liabilities. So it's kind of like a consolidated corporations, where you have many corporations. It's just in, in school districts, it's funds, and you're consolidating those. And so I always like to point out that when you see that number, and you see at the bottom of page thirty-one, and you see a deficit of seventeen million, and that's not anything what you thought the general fund balance was going to end up like, is because that's, that particular consolidation puts in all the capital assets and the long-term liabilities. And your next question might be, why is it a deficit of seventeen million? And last year, school districts had to implement a governmental accounting standard, we call it GASB, Governmental Accounting Standards, Board Statement. And that statement requires you to book other post-employment benefits for retirees, schoolteachers, healthcare. And when you look up at line about, in the data control code's twenty-five, forty-five, you can see that you picked up sixty-two million in OPEB liability. And the OPEB liability, retiree healthcare, is a pay-as-you-go program. So the state makes certain amounts of contributions. They require school districts to make certain contributions. The districts made all the required contributions. But that actuarial calculation of that liability creates a huge amount that causes the district to look in a deficit position. And across the state, if you look at other school districts, this is very common on the government-wide financial statements. So I'm not going to go through A1 and A2 in detail. I'm going to spend my time on moving on over to page thirty-three. But I just want you to know that when you look at those, net position measures financial wealth. And at the bin, on page thirty-three is your balance sheet for your governmental funds, and this mirrors how you're required to keep your books on a modified accrual basis. The general fund in the first column on page thirty-three accounts for the general operations of the school districts, and you can see that you had sixty-four million in assets, fourteen million in liabilities, a million two, a deferred inflow. Those are the property taxes that haven't been collected, so they're not available for appropriation. And then you had forty-nine point two in fund balance. And the next column is your National School Breakfast and Lunch Fund, a major fund which brought in, had assets of four point three million and five hundred and thirty-six thousand in liabilities, and a fund balance of three point eight million. The next column, Debt Service Fund, accounts for the collection of property taxes for the payment of general obligation bonds. Had total assets of seven point seven million, liabilities of three point four million, property taxes not collected yet, two hundred and fifty-two thousand, and then you had a fund balance of four million dollars. And the next column is non-major funds. And, and in your report that you received, back after the notes to the financial statements, there's a lot of consolidating special revenue funds. And all of those do not qualify as major funds, and those are things like Title I Special Ed, food service, not food service, Title I Special Ed, and various state grants that, that are consolidated all into one column. And that's six million in assets and five point four million in liabilities and six hundred and forty-two thousand in fund balance. It's, most of your federal grants and state grants revenues equal expenditure. So you really don't build fund balance. A lot of times, that's from the campus activities. On page thirty-five is the revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balance. And this is a schedule that a lot of times you'll see in the newspaper. It's the first column, again, the general fund, took in a hundred and forty-nine million on page thirty-five, and then the expenditures were a hundred and forty-three point seven million, and you had an excess of five point eight million, some transfers out- million, and you had an excess of five point eight million, some transfers out of six hundred and twenty-eight thousand. So, overall, your increase from fund balance was five point two million, which brought fund balance from forty-four million to forty-nine million, and that's primarily, basically, about thirty-four percent in total fund balance, and unassigned fund balance, about thirty percent of your fund balance, of total expenditures for the year. The next column is your National School Breakfast and Lunch Fund, which took in ten point nine million, nine point nine million in expenditures, a million dollars in excess of revenues, which brought fund balance from two point eight to three point eight. The next column is your Debt Service Fund, which brought fourteen point seven million in revenues, fourteen point six in expenditures, forty-seven thousand transfer in, a hundred and forty-five thousand net increase, which brought fund balance from three point nine to four point oh. And again, the non-major governmental funds, twenty-one million in revenues, twenty-two million expenditures, and then you had some other sources, uses of five hundred and eighty-one thousand, for an overall decrease of four hundred and forty-one thousand, which brought the fund balance from a million dollars to six hundred and forty-two thousand. On page thirty-seven is your Internal Service Fund, and this is for your, the district is self-funded, and health insurance and workers' comp, and you can see that you had total assets of three point seven million, liabilities of a million, and net position of two point seven million. On page thirty-eight, your revenues for those self-insurance funds were thirteen point three million, and a million, eleven million in expenditures, and a million eight in net change in position, which brought that beginning from nine hundred and four, five thousand to two point seven million. And that's always a conservative number, because in the liabilities on health insurance and workers' comp, the district receives reports from actuaries that calculate what incurred but not reported claims are, to make sure that you have a conservative number in that liability, so that your, you know, that your net position there is fairly stated. Another thing that I want to mention is, after the proprietary funds, is just the fiduciary funds on page forty and forty-one, and primarily, those are funds on page forty and forty-one that you're holding in a trust agreement for scholarships, or agency fund, student clubs, and so that's what those monies are for. The most important footnote in your notes to the financial statements, which began on page forty-two, the notes begin there that give greater detail for all of the different numbers of, in the balance sheets, and the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, is Note Nine on page sixty-two. And to me, the district, a lot of times, wants to say, how much do we owe, and when is it going to be paid off? And when you look at the middle of page sixty-two, that table there consolidates all the long-term liabilities. So, you can see general obligation bonds, balance outstanding is a hundred and forty-eight million, and you can see that you have the lease revenue bonds of three hundred and forty-five thousand, which are going to be paid off in the twenty, twenty-one, nineteen, twenty-year. And then you have your premiums and accumulated accretion, accretion related to the general obligation bonds. And then you have a net pension liability, and those are the things that really raise up those long-term liabilities, is the TRS Retirement Plan, fifty point five million, and then the other post-employment benefits for retiree healthcare of the sixty-two million. So, that's kind of a consolidation, when you see the long-term liabilities, they're over on that Exhibit A1, this is the breakdown for them. And on page sixty-three, it breaks them down even further. At the top of page sixty-three, breaks down all your different general obligation bonds by series, and then the middle table breaks down the payments of principal and interest for the next five years, and then in five-year increments. And so, that's kind of a, a summary of all of those, and then the lease revenue bonds on the next page that were paid off in the current year. The other important thing that a lot of times you may want to look at is on page eighty-six and eighty-seven. Eighty-six and eighty-seven is your pension plan, and you can see how, if you look at the net pension liability on its, on page eighty-six, and it's the second row of numbers, you can see in 2015, that net pension liability was fourteen million, and now it's fifty million. And even in the last year, from thirty-one million to fifty million, and that big increase was, the actuaries lowered the discount rate. And when you lower the discount rate, it increases the liability. So, when the district has to pick up its proportionate share of that liability, then that amount went from thirty-one million to fifty million. And so, sometimes, as, as board members have asked me in the past, is, you know, why do we have a big liability? Aren't we paying everything that we should be paying? And as you can see on page eighty-seven, your required payments this year were three point two million, and you paid in the full amount that the district was required to pay in. And, and the same things are on page eighty-eight and eighty-nine, only that's the retiree healthcare, what they refer to as OPEB, and you can see that that liability is a lot greater, and that's because the state set that plan up as a pay-as-you-go plan. So, each year, it's just funding, so you can see they only have a one percent carry of cash in net position in those particular funds. The most important thing in the audit is on page one sixty-seven, and I'm not going to read the letters to you today that are, tonight, that are in the audit report, but on page one sixty-seven summarizes up the audit report, in that the state's going to get the information in PMS data, they're going to get it in a data feed, they're also going to get a PDF of it, and also, what they want to know, the state says, we get all this information, we want to know how we can rely on it. And so, when they look at it, the very first thing they look at is, number one, unmodified. That means a clean opinion, that means they can rely on these financial statements and the data that's going to be fed to them. That, and that's the highest level of assurance that you can get, that your financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The other things they look at is whether there are any internal control weaknesses over financial reporting, there were no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, nor no material non-compliance. The next thing, because the district receives more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funds, you're required to have a federal single audit, the federal programs we tested this year under Number Seven is Title I, Special Ed Cluster, Title II, and also the Texas Title Priority I. The district is a low-risk auditee, and you also received a clean, unmodified opinion on your federal programs, there were no material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, or non-compliance. And so, kudos to the district, and Cheryl, and all of her staff, and, and the grant coordinators that handled, handled these grants this year. We appreciate all the work that y'all did, and provided us information. As far as the board, we come in at an interim date, we send request lists, list of what we need, they upload things on a secure portal, we start working with that, they send us dumps of all GL expenditures, and payroll expenditures, and our analytics groups are running analytics and telling us auditors what we should test, that looks unusual. And so, anyway, they did a great job, and, and kudos, and thank you, Cheryl, for all of your staff, for the professionalism and courtesy they extended us. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have now.
Mr. Sykes? Oh, sorry, Mr. Sykes.
Thank you for your report, and thank you for clarifying Exhibit A1. In that regard, with the, with the details you presented there, would we expect that future periods would show a deficit net position going forward? Okay.
I think so. And as long as we have that OPEB TRS care, the pension didn't put you into a deficit, because, you know, the, you know, the TRS is doing surcharges to the districts, they've raised the contribution rates, and even though investments have done, you know, you might say, why aren't investments doing well, but they did do better? But the thing was, they changed that discount rate. When they changed that discount rate, when they lower that, then that created higher liability there for actuaries.
And that's going to change as the market changes?
That's going to change, and, you know, so, anyway, investments are good now, I think, for them, as, and, and, and I think, I don't think, I don't look for them to change that discount rate again. I mean, we hope the economy stays strong, and it doesn't go down, because the discount rate is, is determined based on the investment return.
Right.
And then they take a margin of error in there.
Okay. Well, again, thank you very much for what you brought to us this evening. Certainly, I appreciate the, the reference to the unmodified opinion, and congratulations to Cheryl and your group for bringing this forward with such a, with such a great report. And on that basis, Madam President, I move that we accept the financial report, audit report as presented.
I'll entertain a second, but I know Mr. DePuy had a question.
Do you have a second question?
Oh, same question.
Gosh. You're sort of imprecise, are you? I've got my answer.
Mine was imprecise? I don't know.
No, it was not congruent necessarily with mine.
Oh, I see. I'll give you that.
The question was very precise. It was a drum.
Is that a second?
Yeah.
All right. Any more discussions? All those in favor of the audit report as presented, say aye.
Aye.
I don't hear any opposed. It passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Number fourteen, announcements. Mr. DeBeere.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple items to highlight this evening, starting with this Saturday, when we will crown our Waco ISD Middle School Basketball Champions, in games that start at nine AM at Waco High School, and be a lot of fun, and in just a true community atmosphere, so we invite you, we invite the public to come join us, to cheer on those developing student athletes. And then, on February eleventh, we're excited about a conversation that we're going to be hosting with Dr. Kincanon. We'll be working to host essentially a telephone town hall, dialing out to all of our employees and our families that have shared their phone number with us, to give them an opportunity to talk directly with Dr. Kincanon, ask questions about the district, but also hear her vision for where we're headed next. And so, we'll certainly also be sharing information about how, if we don't have your number, if we miss you when you dial out, you can dial into that conversation from six to seven PM on the eleventh. But we're excited to hear from our families, and to hear from our employees. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other announcements?
Yes. Yes. Okay. I just wanted to, I was out of the country, so I wasn't here for a last board meeting, but I just wanted to say, I was reading Mrs. Crumb's article on the database instruction, and I thought I should acknowledge it before everyone, just, the, what I have seen is, not to throw shade on anyone else, but what I have seen is, people kind of use these jargons and slogans, but it doesn't seem to kind of trickle down to our teachers, faculty, and administrators, who seem to really kind of need some training, or some help, or honestly, just information. And so, I think, over the course of this year, I really do see kind of a shift in culture, one where really supporting faculty and administration, listening to them, what their needs are, seems to be very apparent. And I think the, you know, again, we've, we've thrown around the terms of database instruction, but I really do see, you know, with you bringing in Region Twelve, I really do see that kind of trickling down. And, and so, I really do appreciate it. I, I spoke to someone, and someone had said, you know, that you had come to a meeting, and you know what you're talking about, and I thought, I'm so glad, as every superintendent should. And so, anyway, just, I just wanted to say, I really see the systems change, I see the caring about our administration and our faculty, listening to them, and really hearing their needs. And I think, you know, as we kind of continue to do that, really supporting them, and offering them the training that's relevant to them, not just what we are pulling out of the sky, but really what's relevant, I think, I really do think this is, things that people maybe have talked about before, or thrown around, but really have implemented down to kind of this grassroots level. So, I'm really appreciative of that, and I see it from the board, and I just wanted to say, I think these types of strategies, these types of systems that are being put in place, really, really are going to start, we're going to start seeing some shift in some of the trajectory of these schools. I think we're going to have, and we've talked about teacher retention, but I think this is one way that we can retain teachers, is to listen to them, and to offer them the, the tools that they need to be successful. And so, I just wanted to thank you, because these are thoughts that I thought, and I need to say them out loud.
I want to appreciate your acknowledgement of that work, and thank my team. We have some pretty phenomenal leaders leading that work. You saw Ms. Cornbloom, and she was looking a little tired tonight, she's been teaching a lot, and working with staff, and is doing a great job. Ms. White was leading action coaching the last two days with our principals, and, you know, we talked, you did miss the, the last meeting, we talked about going poolside, and just really being in the work with the staff, and that's what we're trying to do. And so, that culture shift is, really is about listening, and being there to support. The number one thing we heard in the Design Thinking Institute, the big idea that came out for teacher retention was listening to the people who are closest to the work, and valuing them, and what they need to improve instruction in their classrooms, and so, that's the goal, is to honor them, and try to remove barriers, so that they can do what they need to do with our students. And so, I thank you very much.
Again, that's not to say people haven't been working hard, but just, I really appreciate your leadership on this, and making sure it gets disseminated all the way down.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Manning.
I would like to say just thank you to Dr. Kincanon, the staff, and all the schools for trustee appreciation. Sir, we are elected volunteers, not just, not just volunteers. Unfortunately, we elected volunteers, I just want to bring that up. But yet, and still, I, you, thank you, thank you, each and every one, and it's, I think it's good that we doing something, I love this idea of sending those books to the elementary schools. I think this has been one of the best trustee appreciation nights that we have ever had. That's just my personal opinion. So, just thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to Josh and his team for all the hard work to put it together, and we had a campus library assistant help us select the books, and they're really great books, too, so thank you for that.
I want to say, the books are beautiful, and I would like to make sure mine goes to maybe one of the children who came tonight. I don't know what y'all would think appropriate, but I don't have anybody at home to share it with, and I would hate for it to go on a shelf and collect dust. So, if somebody has a good home for mine, please come get it after the meeting.
I see an elementary principal or two over there, and they probably love an extra copy.
I like that idea. I got a niece who's a, she's an elementary teacher in Dallas, I'm going to take up to Dallas and give it to her.
Sweet.
All right. A lot of good work going on around here.
Thank you.
And with that, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Great.